So we are just gonna get started here. The first policy that we'll look at is policy zero one six six, the agenda. And Stacy, was this, I mean, I see Miola two thousand, there's not been any updates in twenty five.
No, and um, and we had one, we had, we had our own policy as well, and did, did we put that off or not?
It's behind, oh, behind, oh, okay, great.
Yes, and so it's zero one six six, so. The way they did it before, which I don't like very much, is they would combine all those into one thing, so if you printed one up, it printed all of them. But anyway, zero one six six is there with the agenda.
Okay, so this is the current, the top one is the current one that we approved, and then the one behind it are the.
Is like on page two.
Oh, it's part of it.
Yeah, about a third of the way down.
Which is six pages.
Yes.
Okay.
Cause they, they used.
Okay.
Those are called bylaws.
No, so bylaws is the category.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so bylaws is the zero, zero thousands.
Yeah, gotcha.
Are bylaws.
No, I can see it now, and this is the other policy, okay. Cause I'm like, pause, and that confused me, cause I didn't know why we have this eight pages of.
While we're here.
So questions or comments?
So my issue is the language on the agenda. I don't know why that's there, I think it's. I think it discourages public participation, and I think we should need to strike it. It's not something we had before.
Ron, is that included? Why was that added, I guess, or?
I have no idea.
Okay.
It's Neola, and God knows what they did.
So this has been in our policy for, since two thousand, but we just haven't done it for recent.
No.
Oh, this was the new one that came through.
All of the Neola policies without an ear review.
Yeah, I recall that, yeah, John, I do.
You know, this is what happens.
Yeah, yeah, one, yeah. So, um, okay. So Ron, do you have any reason why you think that would be needed, that they would have included that statement?
Which one are you talking about?
The, it's on the pa- the first page under agenda, the third, fourth paragraph, in quotes, this meeting is a meeting.
No, but I mean, I.
Is there any legal reason why that would need to be said?
No. Not that I can think of. I don't think it starts out with, telling you when to start out with.
Yeah.
And forgive me, I, I know a member of Pickering, President Pickering alluded to this. I'm not sure if this was, she was, I know she couldn't leave with us this morning, but during the, uh, new board member academy. Now with ISBA a few weeks ago. They had stated that, actually, forgive me, I believe that was just an open meeting. Although there was, there was something that they had stated, um, I had to go back to my notations, that should be included. But I don't think this was it.
Okay.
I don't think this was it. Yeah, I don't think this was it.
Okay.
Forgive me, yeah. So basically, the action items that you, that presented to you at a public meeting are. That by definition come into you as recommendations of the superintendent.
Right.
And supplemented as necessary by information that you might wanna have at that meeting. I mean, I, I think that paragraph is totally unnecessary.
Okay. So we can strike that paragraph.
And I'm curious. And I think the question was asked, why is it that it would be entered? Now, Tony Paul, do you believe that, um, just to inform the community that it's not a public community meeting, but it's a school board meeting or? Yeah, you know, I. But you said, there's, there's.
My experience has been that that's would add nothing to the meeting, usually our biggest. Our biggest problem in public participation is, is apathy.
Yeah.
We have interest, whether it's address code or whatever is hot and tuck, you know, we're gonna have people here.
Well, and you know, it's interesting going back to, um, the new board member academy, um, learning that. And again, I assume you've been aware of the board. Public can comment on anything that they would like in both the public, right, in both the business people. And the work session, I think at one point, it used to be that during work session, public commentary can only. Pretending to, you know, items on that.
Not session, now, now it's a little bit tighter than that, but it's not quite as tight as, as, as maybe they made you think, led you to believe. The public has a right to comment on any item, whether it's on the agenda or otherwise. If in fact the board takes final action, i.e. vote on that matter. Now, if it's not on the agenda and the board doesn't even address it, and the public. Uh, public's right to comment on it is, is, it's not a right, it's a courtesy that may be extended during the public comment. Section of the board, but there's no right, if you will. The statute was amended very clearly to say, before any final action can be taken at a meeting, whether the matter is on the agenda or not, that's why I say. If you recall, when that statute came into effect, I said, well, it's fine to put public commentary at the front of the meeting, which is what we typically done. But we gotta be cognizant of the fact that as we go through the meeting, if issues arise and the board decides they wanna take a vote on something. We have to pause it at that point and invite public comment on whatever that matter might be that they're proposing a vote on. And that statutory, that may need to be, we don't need to replicate every aspect of the statute in our policies.
But again, and that, that's one of the things that I found to be, I guess, new science, if you will, legal, uh, that. When it comes to commentary, they get, they come up and say, pretty much anything they like, they're in, they're in commentary phase of.
Well, I don't know, but it's subjective, you know, I think, um, you know, our, our statement is pretty well drafted as far as the preamble to the. The, that the president reads prior to public comment. And, you know, that's just a matter of enforcement, I think we got a little close recently, just, you know, stepping over the line.
I have a question, I guess, on the first page, the agenda says individual board members may include items on the agenda upon the concurrence of the. Board president, but page three, it says, under agenda, the individual board members may include items on the agenda.
Is that, is that, are those the old policy?
No, this is the, I don't know.
No, those are the old policy.
So this isn't what we do currently, this is current only.
Well, so each one of these has a different, like a different one of themes. So this is all of them, they, what they did, they used to do is they combined them all, like a bunch of, uh, things, and we separated them out.
Okay, so, but do we have to get the president's permission to add something on the agenda?
Michael, look, what policy is that?
The past one says zero one six six is the agenda portion here. And it says, I can include something on the agenda, but on the new one, zero six six, it says I have to have the president's permission. Pretty much. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
The second paragraph of the new one.
That took it to me at the meeting, right, the president would have to decide. If I wanna say, I need to vote on this, then the president would say, no, John, or.
But this is just saying, just to even include something on the agenda, so. To me, it should be if I wanna put some, just like Michael, I guess, added to the agenda this, yesterday. But I don't know if he got Kim's permission, and then said, okay, or. Well, his discussion about assistant principals. That was. I, I'm just trying to figure out whether, which one is correct. To me, I think it, upon the concurrence of the board president should be taken off. As is on page three of our.
Aren't, aren't you still using your agenda committee?
Yes.
So I would think that would be the. Grounds, that would be the venue where you would at least prepare your initial agenda that would go out.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Board meeting.
But.
At the board meeting, if someone wants to add something to the agenda, we don't, I don't know that we have a policy on that, uh, because we used to have one. That required the consent of.
When it's talking about the agenda, is it just talking about at the agenda meeting, or is this talking about at the board meeting, that's what I'm saying, if I. If I wanna add something on to the agenda at the agenda meeting, to me, this reads that Kim has to agree, or the board president does.
I don't think that's the intent, cause I don't think we had an agenda committee back when this was properly initially.
I don't know, I'm just trying to just, I figured out why our last one doesn't include that and our new one does, so.
And the last, the last one, the last one, uh, under zero one six six.
Yeah, that's what I. Yeah, so I'm trying to figure out why that was changed, or want that still on there or not.
I say, strike it. So I'll put a period after agenda and start it with a colon, take that.
I have no idea where you are. Uh, second, sentence, or page, or page. Oh, okay, I'm looking at this.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, after agenda, and everything goes out into.
The issue that, the issue that comes up, in, in the context, I, I think. It evokes the most concern is, an item is added. To the agenda at the board meeting that wasn't on the agenda, and there's a legitimate argument that has find it added for discussion purposes. But unless there's the full consent of the board, not to take final action on it at that time, you know, which will allow you to. Deal with a new emergency, but it's also avoids the surprise of the, of the final action item that no one saw coming prior to the meeting. That's something that's been prevalent, uh, across the country in, in the state, uh, the past, past year or two. And, and there's no right or wrong, just matter what the policy come from, they'll listen.
I've made those, I've made those notations.
There's only one other thing, I mean, since you printed all the stuff, or sent us all the stuff. Um, on page four of the complete bylaws, this would be policy. Oh, one, six, seven point three. And I don't know if you wanna add this to the next one, or, but item B, where it talks about permission to address the board. Uh, make con- contact the superintendent's office by four thirty, I mean, we just, that's not practice, I mean, that's not what we do.
Yeah, but it's a, if you follow, it goes on by saying, or by registering on the signature form.
Okay.
The evening of.
But I guess I, I don't know, I mean, the Colin thing, I guess I was like, do we just need to strike that part?
Or let's, that's, well, let me see what the new one says.
Yeah, oh yeah, I didn't. And then check the new.
Uh, the new one says attendee shall register their intention to participate in the public portion of the meeting upon arrival of the meeting. Okay, you're right, we've struck that already, alright, where is it?
Wh- wh- where's the new one?
Uh, it's, it's not listed, John just brought it up, it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay.
So.
Okay, anything else with the agenda, zero one six six? Okay, so those changes, we'll move on then.
We'll add that to the, the agenda of the next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Policy fifty three thirty point O two, the care of students with diabetes.
Can I talk on this for just a?
No, yeah.
So, um, we gave this to Ms. Hazelbaker, who, who reached out to Meridian and shared it with Meridian to see what their thoughts were. And I can read the email that she received from them. They said, it looks good to me, I know Sierra's reached, uh, has had the school nurses educate some principals and teachers on diabetic care. If there's anyone the principal would want to train as volunteer health aides in the schools, please let us know. So Meridian, this, uh, was given to Meridian, um, there'll be school nurses and they, um.
I think we're missing the second page of it, maybe. But in the printed version. It's several, was it several pages long? I guess my question is, why are we picking on diabetes, we're not picking on, but why not celiac disease, or why not?
Well, this is the, this is the big one, I mean, this is the big one, and it's, I mean, it could be life threatening.
Yeah.
Things are not followed, celiac, I'm, I'm not sure it's life threatening, but it's really.
But I just do that, we have one for peanut allergies, or.
Um, I believe they're, I'm positive on that, but we can check on that, but this, um, this is just for, specifically for diabetes.
Um, yeah, my, I guess I did not read through it, cause my recommendation was to ask if Meridian had. Uh, but this has been our side. Before we had Meridian, we had problems with how we looked at diabetes.
Right.
And the technology is so, for, I mean, we were, you know, we weren't, I mean, the kids, the best practices for the, the patient to. Do it themselves.
Right.
And, uh, we were kind of had all these, so, I guess I'll just read through it for the next meeting and see if that still seems to make sense, I mean, I hope that Meridian. Had that same philosophy.
Were there any recommended changes?
No, they didn't recommend anything. And I can print this up real quick, if you would like to see the, cause it did cut off, I mean, it was like a bunch of pages.
Yeah, but, you know, I don't know, I don't need it right now, cause I.
I mean, I, I'll assume it's okay, and I just, I'll just give it a closer look.
If it, if there's no changes, we don't bring it up, then, so it one, this, maybe we do this, read through it, and then if you see anything that needs, then we can bring it to the next policy meeting. Just let us know, expense, the, the next work group.
Yeah, I'm glad you had Bridget and worked through that, was then to get the experts to look at it, that was.
My partnership with Meridian is just fantastic.
And they, I mean, I think that was part of my frustration with our, was, I mean, we are just. I mean, so I, I, I hope Meridian has the same, if we did, we just, we have to. Medicine, have to try to be on the, at least in the ballpark.
The next policy.
Is there only two pages, excuse me, are there only two pages to that?
No, I think that only one got printed.
I, I, actually, I.
Oh, okay.
So there probably is two.
Oh, yes.
But I, the one that's lacking is citation to legal authority, and that's what.
Um, I.
Meets me.
So actually, it is three pages, and, uh, it, it's IC twenty thirty four five, Ron.
I see twenty thirty four dash five.
Dash five, cool.
Thank you. Cause I'm, and look.
And there's, there's just a short thing on the third page, so.
That's fine.
Next, policy fifty four fifty one, student recognition.
Yeah, I'm sure it left me, the only thing I was uncertain is, you know, it says based on well-defined. Consistent criterion standards, I mean, do it, that, that have to be listed somewhere? Or is it just assumed that it can, I don't, it. I, I think I would just say, we authorize superintendent to develop a plan of recognition of outstanding student achievement, and then period.
I'd agree with that.
If we're gonna have.
Based, and where is that at, so let's use his judgment or her judgment.
If that's okay.
And this recognition is just, I mean, I guess the, not like thing, it's just at the board meetings, right, is that what we're talking about?
I would think you could recognize them by putting up posters, or, yeah, I think. Billboard, um, I know, you know, they block and they put the valid brains out, or they put the entire graduating class up, so I would think any of those things.
Yeah, I think it could stretch to many things, but once again, it's not really our. We're happy to have people here.
I will make that adjustment, and, um, we can put that, that'll go on the next board meeting agenda then.
Right. Next, policy fifty eight seventy, student production of goods and services.
Somebody had a question about what this means, and, um, and I'm gonna talk only from what my references are, I didn't reach out. Cause I know, like, CTE does things, like they'll build a shed for somebody, um, but I think this is more like, um. Thank you, sir. This is more like, um, some services, like. Well, volunteers go out and, like, National Honor Society might go out and help. Do some things, or, you know, you might have a class that might make a service of, or a nursing home, and so. I know Tess is planning, and, and we did it when we were there, and they're gonna start it up again. For, uh, Earth Day, they're gonna go over to the park, and Mr. D Hart is planning all this, and, um, and pick up some of that. Some of that winter crud that falls on the ground, and, and we, that's what we did before, we gathered it up, and then the. Parks department would come by with the big dump truck and fill it up with all the debris, so I think things like that. Is, is what this refers to.
And also, I think you have to remember, there was a point in time, and we had a pretty active auto mechanics department. And, and employees could get their cars serviced by that department, and that was starting to get a little bit fringy because of the.
Okay.
Of, if, if you want, I don't know that I ever considered it exploitation of students, but obviously, there was an educational benefit for the students. Class, but it was also quite a benefit for the, because it's, it was essentially, I, I don't remember detail, but I think it was basically cost-based.
Right.
And that's, that's how we had it established, um, uh, and most career centers around the state and around the country operate as such. And so that, um, it is like a small business, you get a receipt, uh, and they have all the regaleries covered and what, but. As employees, uh, you can drop your, your call to the career center in the morning, and get them picked up in the afternoon. And, um, and it will be ready, simple old changes, they actually, uh, were sophisticated enough to do damage repair. Uh, I mean, just the full, full, full auto body.
Yes, but that's all permitted through this, because it's an education beyond the learning.
Absolutely.
Um, so like, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think of, you know, if a teacher picked up a bunch of kids during school day and took them back to his house to. And sticks up out of the backyard, you're exploiting the students at that point.
And I think that's, that's the whole point of the last sit, sentence, just says, care must be exercised and interpreting the policy, avoid exploitation.
Right, but I think the Earth Day thing is, once again, teaching kids to respect the earth and, and perform service. For organizations and people without the expectation of, um, of getting something back, so.
The only thing that, it's, it's like a grammar mistake to me, is the policy of the school board that students may produce goods and services. You don't produce services, you perform services.
Provide, yeah.
Yeah, or provide, so I think, to me, it should say may produce goods and provide.
Or you can.
I don't know.
And, and.
Just otherwise, if you don't.
And throwing it across, I can add that without, without going to the board for a vote, it's, yeah, that's what I thought.
That's what I recommend.
There is, I can add that in there, and, and so we won't change that, put it on the agenda, but I would, but it provides.
Anything else with that one?
Um, I don't think it's the right policy, but I know in the past, we've had a problem with students doing fundraisers. With Red Devil Pride saying, no, you can't do that, and I don't know if that's, I don't think that's still on students.
I don't know of any fundraisers that anyone has said no to recently.
I remember, like, the cheerleaders are selling, like, uh, stadium blankets, and it was like, all, like, black market stuff, because. Red Devil Pride, you know, said, we, we, we have exclusive rights to anything that's Red Devil.
Actually, we don't, that's a problem.
Which?
We've not trademarked that.
So.
And for that matter, neither has the city, that we are Richmond, or, so, you know, that. There, if you go to any of the box stores, you'll see a lot of pirated logos.
Okay.
Not just ours.
Like, I don't think it's this policy, but, and I don't even think it's an issue anymore, when Roger kinda got out, that seemed all kind of.
Yeah.
Shift, uh, away from that kind of, and, you know, I'm always gonna say, but students, we should support that kind of student involvement, but. I don't, and I think the only thing they've done lately is the Bleacher Creek shirt, and I think they get that sponsored, I think someone pays for those, definitely, and hand them out, or. Cards for a couple dollars.
I think there's still, there's still fundraisers that they do, I believe, different groups, but I'm not positive on that either.
But just, I don't know, we hear.
And, and so there is, there is a, a methodology to that too, so before. From the choir director, I'm gonna sell those cards, those discount cards, yeah, I can't just produce those and stuff, give them out to kids, so. That has to go to my building administrator, who then sends it on over to central office, I think.
There was a point in time that we honored academic excellence by purchase of reins to the, uh, local. Uh, medical community. You know, for those.
They do things now, so like, when my girls, I, I can't remember what, I know Allison got a, a really nice Nike jacket. That said Richmond, and of course, then she went to Purdue, and that, wearing that red R around at Purdue was not probably the thing that she wanted to do. With, um, with Rutgers in the same conference, but, but they do, I think they still honor them in some way, but I'm not exactly positive on that. But that's more, that, that's a little bit different, but, but any, and then there's also a post thing that they do after they do a fundraiser. You know, how effective was this, did it take too much of the kids' time to do that, so that, I mean, it's, they're aware of that, and all those are in guidelines that they get to make it. So, but I'm not sure what that policy is.
I mean, actually, I, I think the Washington trip, you still see the, selling the.
Right.
Eyes and stuff, but, I mean, and this maybe dates me, but, I mean, back in the day. Used by all kinds of trinkets, football and basketball seasons, I mean, that was dating pears and blankets and.
They still, they used to sell that in, out of one of the concession stands, I thought they did, or like, if they had a table set up there.
A lot of that was student-led, like, government would do it, or like the cheerleaders with the, the stating blankets a few years ago, or many years ago now, I guess.
And I don't know if it's legal, but they used to sell the old jerseys too sometimes.
That went.
At football games.
Alright.
Does BPA normally, they, they sold cards, right?
Card.
I wondered about that, because the alumni, they are selling cards now.
Well, they, I think they sell, um, pizzas. Yeah, like the pizza coupons for Manzinos.
I guess I just don't ever want our corporate sponsors or partners to get in the way of student-led.
Correct, and taking a huge chunk of the profits, yeah. Like, we're having Red Devil Pride or Music Booster sell something, and have the kids do all the work and give them ten percent. Which doesn't seem right, but, yeah, so I, I agree with John.
Okay, policy sixty one twelve, cash management of grants.
We brought the expert in. Do you have any questions about it?
I think we may have one page of this also.
I, I, I'll put you up more.
So Melissa, what is it?
So the only thing that I noticed.
Can I copy that?
Sure. I wrote it.
Is that okay?
Those were my notes from the board meeting.
Oh, it has me, it has me in notes from board meeting last night, I apologize for that.
Actually, uh, they, they.
The one thing I think you mentioned on this one was in the cash advance payment method. When we had our, um, federal fiscal monitoring, they said there should be no cash advance on the federal grants.
Okay.
So, and.
So do we need to delete that section? Or leave it in for option, or which is.
There is, uh, one state grant that could possibly, um, have a cash advance, so I worry about removing it altogether. Um, I don't know that we do the cash advance for it, but in case. Um, I have been told that this one is, uh, different than the others, and that in the past it has been.
Cash.
Done in advance highly. And, um, so, I, I don't know that we want to remove it, but I know where it says a lot of the federal. Comments, we, we don't do any for federal.
This appears to be into almost entirely federally respected. I mean, the citations to, to federal regulations.
The only thing I noticed was the first line that says including federal, state, and local funds, so that's the only. It kind of. Reason I worried about taking it out quickly.
Is there any harm in keeping this in, that you perceive that?
I don't think so, cause we don't, we don't do advance in federal.
Well, typically, the, to correlate this to the way it works at the county level.
Thank you.
Whether it be a federal, which is selfless, in case, but usually state or state grants. Uh, the issue becomes whether it is a reimbursable grant. Or whether it is a direct grant that you spend, report your expenditure, and at the end of the. Grant cycle, then you, it gets a final order, if it's a reimbursable grant, then there creates an obligation to cash flow the grant. Before you get the money, cause you have to provide the service, apply for the reimbursement, and then get the money. So that isn't a concern that the physical body had, in the county level, the county council. Uh, and then secondly, what, if any, are the personnel implications, are we looking at adding staff? Uh, and if so, uh, it becomes a little bit more problematic in school context because of our. Relationships with the union, uh, and generally, those positions cannot be necessarily directly hinged to the. Continued availability of the source, so you could have a person working on the grant, accumulate seniority, the grant go away, and then somebody else gets, if you will. Uh, riffed.
Right.
So, so it's, it's not a perfect analogy, but that's, that, that's part of the problem, there's just a lot of moving parts to the, to the grand issue. But I agree, this policy appears to be fairly, fairly grounded. I don't know, that's, I don't know, I have to deal with the millipede, that's the problem.
Any problem in just leaving it in then, if we aren't gonna do the.
I don't see a problem, that, I, I'd hate to come back, try to reconstruct the policy we think we need after this.
What if, uh, we said, when corporation is required to use a cash advanced payment method? So like, if you said there's a state grant that require or needs that.
Yeah, I think they, they, you have to, uh, turn it in by May, but the grant doesn't end until like September, so you could have. Payments going out or stipends. Payments going out or stipends going out after that, but it wouldn't be reimbursed.
That would say that we only use cash advance play payment method when it's required, rather than you, I mean. I don't know if that would help us in an audit situation, I don't know, I mean, it's, this is not.
Typically, your grants are randomly audited, I mean, they're not universally audited, are they?
Right, no, we just had like a fiscal monitoring that, um they're starting to do more monitoring, I guess. They wanna visit the school corporations more every so many years there.
Who was it that said that?
It was the state, it was, she was from the IDO, that she does the fiscal monitoring. Yeah. And she was like, make sure that your, you know, policies match what you're doing, because they, we also had to turn in the policies at the time.
I defer to you, Melissa.
To what?
I defer to you.
I like it's, just keep it in case you need it.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Okay.
No, that's a good look at the back, you know?
Okay, policy thirty-six sixty-one point oh one, threatening and or intimidating behavior toward staff member. Technical corrections, it looks like with some verbiage.
Yeah, so um that, and you can see, everything in green is what Neola suggests that we change, and it's just kind of. Addison.
Which one we have?
Um thirty-three sixty-two seven one.
Now, but how does this differ, okay, this is a different, because we uh we approved one last night, threatening and intimidating behavior toward staff members.
Yeah, and that.
What is that, how is that one different?
That one um might have been a different.
It was sixteen sixty-two point oh one.
Yeah, so that was, but that, once again, they're separated out.
Okay, so this is, this one, even though they're the same and.
And if you look at the bottom, it has cross references down there.
Got it.
So they started doing that as well, remember you guys asked for me to start doing this, please, but they've done it for us.
So are these the same changes made yesterday, I guess?
I believe so.
I remember looking at the show and.
Sadly, the uh. This reflects the statute. And any, who the lawyer would never use the term immediately, because nothing happens immediately. But the Smith case out of Muncie with the assault, went to the court of appeals. upheld that language, so we gotta live with it.
So that'll go to the board as well.
Yes. Policy fifty-three fifty, student suicide awareness and prevention. This looks like, uh is this only the wording changes?
Um I can, let me pull up and and type it.
Those themselves, you know? Like changing children to student.
Um so it reflects that a parent has a right to review educational materials, bullying, suicide prevention, I guess.
Okay, that was added.
Looks like it got held too, so that's really on page two.
It's probably similar to the wording on the next policy we're looking at, because we do have a second page of that, can't remember seeing that on both of them, where parent has access to materials.
Yes. So that was the big thing that.
And so what, what bullying programs do we use? For prevention, suicide prevention programs, like if a parent said, show me, what what are we gonna show him, I guess?
I don't know what they had, what they use in the school right now, I can check on that.
Okay.
As far as, as far as protocols, like for example, if you call and say, Red Devil Pride is being bullied by Cynthia Elsmire yet again, Cynthia continues to bully, it's the third time.
You're in a third grade classroom.
Yes, and so.
And I'm requesting as a parent for you to tell me what. Yeah, so what?
Yeah, and so uh there is protocols, uh we actually, I actually spoke with a principal yesterday, because we have a, so. A matter in which uh a student has been found for the third time to have been tormenting another student. And uh they have documentation of the, of each incident. Uh they have recorded the times in which they made phone calls, both parents of both parties. As well as a record of the disciplinary action responses taken with each incident.
But as a parent, this says that I, I wanna know what prevention curriculum and program or suicide program that you are. I guess I, you documented all of that, but I wanna know what what program was in place, what curriculum? That's what this says. It says a parent of a student, the corporation shall be allowed to review any materials used in any bullying prevention or suicide prevention program. I'm just saying, if I'm a parent and I say, show me what curriculum is being used.
Yeah.
What do I get?
Yeah, what what is that, and if I'm a third grade teacher and a parent asks me, because you're, I'm like. I don't, I mean, maybe there's a curriculum that's used everywhere in every classroom now, but.
We'll talk about building leaders and and I assume, and again, it's never safe to assume, but I I simply assume that uh within our um health and wellness. Uh courses, as well as even some of the um soul skills, uh programming that we offer, that um.
Well, I guess technically this says I shall be allowed to review any material used, it doesn't say that there's a requirement that. Bullying curriculum is used.
Like, right, I think we find, uh find that there is a requirement that bullying follows.
Yeah, there is, uh there is bullying that that you have to, and I'm not sure about the suicide, but I know there is bullying, and I know that our staff goes through training. They're yearly trained, they have to do the suicide prevention, but like.
And again, we're talking about materials, which is general, not student specific.
Right.
Right.
Programmatic type, uh.
So we have those available too, and then um like this, this week I, I was in the challenge day. So that covers both of those issues, and and kids could opt out of that too, and they can opt out of parts of that as well.
It's found, in secondary level, it's found within, as I mentioned, the realm of health. That's, that's in in education, so elementary more would find out.
And then, and this is going, we're going back a few years, because it's been a while since I was building leader, but um like, we always had, we had assemblies. That we would have to come in and speak to, we used um, there's a youth pastor from up north, that was, he was really good. And um we used him to do some of those.
Okay.
A great point, and we'll definitely follow up.
I mean, I think best practice, it seems like, I mean, I would say pamphlet, but maybe the website should have a. A link to bullying resources and a link to suicide prevention resources.
And actually, uh.
Maybe it does.
Card, uh the ID cards that the students have, uh there is a lot of information on like about suicide prevention, bullying, counseling, the whole nine. Uh but I'm pulling up the website now, because I believe we, we also offer.
We offer it for our teachers.
Our teachers and for our community.
All, yeah, all the.
Yeah.
All of our staff and faculty have suicide prevention.
Is the two hours of training that this says teachers, is that the videos at the beginning of the year?
No, so that doesn't count for licensing, yeah, so this, the uh, for, to get your teaching credentials, you have to do a suicide prevention. And the, what we offer through our um, every year, through our mandatory training, doesn't. Doesn't fulfill that part of it, it's not long enough, so uh when you go to get your initial credentials, and then when you go to get other creden, you know, when you get.
Right.
To go through that training.
But this says teachers will go through two hours every three years of training.
Yeah, and that's, and that's the state part, yeah, so, so we do that.
Okay.
But it's spread out over three.
Okay, perfect.
And also, uh just uh, and another addition, uh if you go back to the sometimes update from last week, uh there's a graphic. Of what uh is found on the ID cards in the crisis prevention, and to the other page.
Okay, next, policy fifty-five seventeen point oh one, and this is the bullying policy.
Right, and it has air and access to it. Actually, they, here I can read you what the, what they've given us. Um, according to H E A fourteen eighty-three, we've had provisions that require schools to prioritize the safety of the victim. Timetables for reporting bullying incidents to the parents of both targeted student and the bully. Alleged perpetrator in an expedited manner, that is not later than five days after the incident's reported. Also, the discipline rules must include policies to allow parent and child in corporation to review any material used in the bullying prevention, suicide prevention.
And what's it, what, what, did you just read Stacy?
That's from the update, so when they do updates, they give you uh, they, they kinda get a summarize what the changes are, that they're. They're, and you have access to that as well, if you go under policies, it has a. It has, yeah, menu item that you can select that.
Where in this, does it say the five days, yes, I'm looking.
Think we're missing a page here.
Okay. Oh, we're missing the middle page on this one.
That goes AP, then.
Yeah, it does, okay.
I'll print that.
Here, I put it here.
Yes, you have my copy.
No, put it right here. Alright. There it is.
And can we go back to kids?
Yes.
Okay, because down at the very bottom of the first page, there's an option that you can have. Um you can select that the superintendent confirmed that all corporation teachers, and then you can select. And any other appropriate corporation employees who are employed at schools provide instruction to students in combinations, so you can add that if you want.
And where? Which one, man?
Um sorry, fifty-three fifty at the very bottom, there's an option that you have there that that you can select more than just teachers.
Uh so that would say that, that, I mean, aides or pairs?
Right, you could add those to.
Oh, okay.
If they're gonna give um, like, for example, we have STEAM pairs that. They wouldn't necessarily provide this, but we may have other pairs that that would have that opportunity to.
So I guess, do we, are they trained, do they get them two hours every three years if we put that?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so everyone, I mean, I just wanna make sure we're not.
All employees do.
Okay, so, seems like.
So do you wanna add that then?
I mean, I, I would, if we do it.
I'm not seeing that, are we in fifty-five seventeen oh?
No, I'm sorry. I have to go back fifty-three fifty. It's at the very bottom of the, of that first page.
Yeah.
There's an option there that you be, sorry. It does say other appropriate, so that would be, I think that just allows us to do it, we can have to, but that gives the option to.
Any objection to that, John?
No.
Okay.
Okay, back to fifty-five seventeen oh one, and that looks like on that second page, there's some options there, is that right, Stacy?
Right, that, I'm a little bothered by it, but I, I'm not sure we have the op, we have. I don't think we can unilaterally impose those options, I think this is gonna suggest probably uh involvement of juvenile, juvenile justice. Particularly when you're looking at force transfer of the educational environment. I think parameters that would govern the focus of this option are probably gonna be more external. To RCS than internal to our policy, and if they exist outside it, then I don't know, they'll either replicate them or even attempt to. Are we, are we looking at the, the like five fifteen?
No.
The severity of an, of an incident of bullying may be considered, including whether the victim suffered, suffered a physical injury, which is probably a criminal event. In determining appropriate remedial, remedial action, well, at that point, the remedial actions probably not gonna be a. We're gonna make a salt, but we're not gonna have control.
Right, and and you know, if that happens at the high school, we can't transfer them to another high school, we don't have that ability to do that, so I agree with you. The other thing I didn't like about this, and I don't know how we fix that, is, um I know the verbiage we used when I was a building leader. We didn't use victim, because that victimizes the victim again.
Yes.
Um, but that's what's used here, and and I'm not sure um. How to fix that.
I, I don't know that we need that option, I guess, so.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Ron, I don't think you need that option either, I agree.
Take it out.
Okay, I will not include that option.
It, I mean, we're keeping the line, the follow-up services shall be provided, that sentence stays, right, okay.
Yes, it's just uh, that draft, you know, at the end of all.
Do you wanna change the victim, do you wanna wordsmith that base of the year?
You want, you want me to do a little work on that and?
I think you're gonna find this probably in the statute.
Uh it's probably in the statute, and that's what it is, so I think we ha, even though I don't like it, I think we have to keep it, um. And I guess the other thing is, it, it refers to it here, but when you talk to the person, you don't refer to them as victim. And I think that's, you know, the the verbiage you use in investigation.
Person who's the.
Yeah, there's, so, I think we'll bring that then, and make that one change.
Policy sixty-three twenty, purchasing.
We brought an expert for this one too.
Well, I guarantee, I'm not an expert, because I, I do not think we have a purchasing policy statute anymore, because. Look at how many pages you have of Amazon purchases on your plan, on your plane dock.
Yeah.
Said Friday, he'll, he'll buy Friday, right, Melissa?
Well, they did resend part of it, because they did resend one, and you can talk to that. Didn't they resend part of it and put it like the online?
Talking about the reverse function?
Yeah, that what they, the intuitive is with the other, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm talking.
Let her talk, Stacy.
I will.
Okay, so this one, I did double check the amounts, and so for the over fifty, under a hundred and fifty, you do need the three quotes. And the over fifty, the over one hundred and fifty, we do need to go to the bidding. Is that what I was supposed to do?
Yeah, well, is that the middle of the first page?
Yes.
Okay, so those amounts are correct.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Is this saying we should take out school?
Well, I guess, wait, wait, can we start at the very top, it it is the policy of the school board that the blank shall act. Are, are we putting, are all three of those in there, are we choosing one, or I don't know?
I believe all three have, usually you have multiple purchases.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay, just wanted to.
Usually it's the building.
So do we need to add? More than that? Or just leave it as superintendent, business manager, treasurer?
I'll give this left as it is, as attorney calls referenced, a lot of those purchases. Very similar to what Mr. Mob's going to earlier, eventually a funnel to the central.
Through the, right, okay, okay.
I will, I will make that change.
I think this is one where I don't know what we're doing, but I think we gotta keep this, because it, it does mirror the statute as far as the.
Okay.
Threshold of purchases.
Okay.
And of those thresholds again, uh.
You said it way better, got it, so we need this, and it looks good, is what I'm hearing.
Attorney calls has a little more experience, and I'll sell with, with, with my, without about it. But but again, just clarity, as you mentioned, Mrs. Swab, uh anything uh up to fifty thousand dollars, uh purchasing, we may, may, over fifty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, what's that?
Um, over a hundred and fifty percent.
Over a hundred and fifty thousand, I would need three beds, but anything more than fifty thousand.
Three.
Three quarters, yes, yeah.
Okay, so now you've got me thinking, are you thinking that with Amazon, we need to be doing something different?
Well, I think, if you look at the statute, it says you cannot break down purchases to avoid spending threshold limits. What are we doing at the building level, when you, you know, I'll see, you know, between Amazon and JP Morgan. What are we doing at the building level when you, you know, I'll see, you know, between Amazon and J P Morgan Chase or whatever it is, I mean. I the whole system is is really. Really uh.
So you're saying over the span of a year, we s- we pay more to Amazon than that, but it's all broken up into smaller sections. Not purposely by us, but that's just when you buy and when you need them. So that's. Yeah.
That's why I said I think we need this. I'm not sure what we're doing and and.
What about these options then?
Because we basically, we've we've adopted a much tighter policy to county. Much smaller thresholds. Because we want more control.
So I didn't understand um. Doesn't seem like we often even have three bidders, even on our bigger projects. So I guess we're not, it's a shall, it's not a must, I guess, right?
No, bidding is one, bidding is not quoting.
Yeah, the fifty to a hundred and fifty is when you receive three. You're supposed to try to receive.
And you don't have to, if you don't have have them available in your market area.
Okay.
It's up to three. Uh bidding is just like we have, you know, unfortunately, we're in a market now where there aren't many.
Okay.
Contractors who have the ability to bond some of us, our judges, our jobs the size that they are, and so you're seeing. Relatively few qualified bidders on our public works projects, and that's a problem. I had concerns about when we did our pretty aggressive bond issue because I wasn't sure if we were gonna be able to get the. Labor contracted force to be able to spend those bond proceeds in the time we have to spend them. And that's still an issue that I think Kevin's working with.
I think I also read that if you don't get three quotes and you can't get any quotes, then you can just fall back on you.
Yeah, it's it. Open, yeah, you have the default. You have it just go in that open market. And again, you gotta remember, we're talking about goods, not services.
Right.
Services we can procure in any manner that we so choose, but we do need to have some kind of policy direction over oversight for services. So. That's something to think about. We typically take those on a case by case basis. If you wanna interview architects in a project, we do that. Sometimes we don't because of. The relationships we've had and still have, you know, like well, if you see they're highly involved. It's services are a whole different thing. Legal services, accounting services, whatever. So attorney calls, what you just referenced there and that same. We can reference services. When you say we do not have to um put bids out for services? No. We do not.
We were just looking all that up. Um we were talking about orange show.
Right.
We did, I pulled that up in the meeting and showed Elizabeth that first set on state board accounts that you didn't have to.
Right.
And then it defined what services were, so.
But I mean, it gets slow sometimes. Sometimes there's a level of deliverables that are involved with the service. You have to characterize. Overall, whether this is a purchase of deliverables, goods, supplies, or is it really a service, so.
So so when we when we got like the new turf, didn't we buy that as part of a state negotiated contract?
That's a different deal. We got a whole, yeah, we.
Okay.
If there's a Q if there's a Q P A on it.
That doesn't have anything to do with this.
It well, it's an exemption. You can buy under a Q P A, a qualified purchasing uh. Agreement or whatever. Regular museum, county level to relate. Q P As for law enforcement vehicles and buses, we buy buses.
Yeah. And buses aren't over a hundred and fifty yet, but I'm sure they'll be.
Pretty close.
I would think it probably are.
I would, yeah.
Most around over around two hundred thousand, you should put all the bells and whistles and take them.
Yeah.
So the bottom of the first page, the competitive bidding supplies, artifacts added uh uh and the whole next page, next page is. Is that Melissa? I mean, I think that's just the only thing that exceeds over a hundred and fifty thousand in supplies. Here's the process that needs to be followed and following uh Indiana code and its rules, I guess.
Some of those are choices. We might select those choices.
Yeah, so in the middle of the second page, the optional provision, we can select both, neither or one.
We have to on the first page, is there? Yeah, right above the green this area.
Oh, I didn't see that one, yeah. When the purchase of and contract for single items or supplies, amount so one fifty or more is equal to exceeds the amount stipend by statute.
As bad as this is, this is not bad. Wait till you get to the next. Sixty-three contracts, sixty-three. Three thirty or whatever the cross reference is. That is truly, I guess.
I'm so confused because why are we choosing that one right below? It says here's what we do for one fifty.
I would just choose one fifty then.
Amounts to one fifty or more.
And who is that? Who can the the business manager of things?
I think the blank is those three.
Those three again?
I think so.
Okay.
But what is the?
Bid openers. Is that what that's mean? Is that what that's for?
Yeah.
Now we change competitive bids.
I'm not sure if we're competitive, but we're board approved bid openers.
Oh, well, yeah, that probably should be next.
I forget what the.
What is stipulated by statute though? What is that currently?
You said you checked this one fifty, right?
Is it one? Yeah. Then do we wanna choose that equal to or exceeds to, so we don't have to come back one day or two?
Well, I love that, but it says one fifty all over the place.
It does. That's true. So we'd have to look at the end. Okay, keep it one fifty.
Okay.
So then the second page in the middle.
At the top, do we want those four checks as well too?
I didn't see that.
These up here, yeah, B C D E and F.
Okay.
Well, you know, that shouldn't be B C D and F, because that doesn't make sense, because then we're missing something else. Hang on. Yeah.
So it's actually like, so I printed this off. So it's actually nine pages, but the way that Dr. Wright, we were just looking at it, it's kind of. It goes from.
It then obviously elucidated the forms. Um this is all balanced. Once it goes to print, as we move.
Yeah, the sequence goes from B to B.
Right, and. Yeah.
There's something's.
It's a seat, you know, just eight, three or four.
I'll I'll pull it up electronically and see if you can't hear the sound.
Well, I think that was the one thing I just mentioned in sales wire. I think I think Mrs. Weber said it's asked as far as the kind of reserve trades, I think as you move through these processes, we may just wanna revert to the electronic version. Oh.
I think we have all the pages that are in the wrong order. So after page one, page two is the it did the the page that we have that starts with C.
No, it starts with actually the number one. An invitation for bids shall include the following code. Subparagraph one, purchase description, all contractual terms and conditions as light as purchase. A statement of the evaluated criteria that shall be used, including any of the following in the subparagraph A, inspection, testing, quality, warranty. But that was sent out. I think correctly.
Well, in my stack on my desk, it was or in this area, it was not in the correct order. So now I see that C B comes after C, which the second page is the procurement page, yes. So we don't have anything to confuse here.
Okay, so we see that there.
And I think the next option would be under procurement, the fourth paragraph down.
See.
That's an option. All specifically identified purchases that are within. Program, a function, a light item.
We think that's page three.
All right.
I I. It's right there.
Cindy. Please, that is the D.
This actually looks a lot.
Down, you have that page.
Okay.
Maybe. Yes, I have it.
Okay.
Just a mock to print the ball.
Stacy's printing. I'm sorry. It's okay.
You're fine. Hey, this is out of your sphere of control.
So how often do teachers have to get CPR sooner by then?
They do, they go to renew their licensure.
So that three years.
Five.
No, like I'm getting ready to renew my license. I had a ten-year license and I've got to be.
Oh, you offered annually, but.
I think it's three.
I I like that they offered it recently, but it they spots filled up. I don't feel like there's enough for teachers.
McKibben does a tremendous job of.
Meridian put out, though, I think they had three dates and they're all the way into way into spring and mid summer and they're full.
My wife suggests we buy our own dummy and system because it's all computerized now.
Yes, it is.
And we'd accept the bed last.
Does McKibben make money on it?
Fifty bucks, yes.
I would think she makes some money, like if you have ten people sign up. Not me not saying that she shouldn't, but I'm saying, yeah, I like the idea of like, because it's required. And so many teachers every year are needing it.
But if we had, I mean, if we had our own system, they could come in and. Cause it measures everything. That's what they do at Reed.
But Meridian, I remember, said that they could be doing it. That's part of, and I know they've put out those dates, but they're full. They're gonna have to do it more often. Maybe Stacy will.
Yeah, and it just, I mean, I don't.
It's something that every teacher needs and it could be used for paras. I mean, it could be used for, I mean, it's good information to have. Thank you.
Cause I think Reed deployed to do it yearly.
Oh, it's.
I think we dropped us as a dummy maybe or maybe it goes.
Okay, we're starting back over with this policy. They're front to back.
All right.
We're at we.
Were you at sixty-three twenty?
We're at sixty-three twenty.
Yes.
Yes, and so we determine the front page, our options. Now we're gonna turn to the back of the first page.
I totally lost it.
The purchasing agent.
What is the last thing on your first page?
Competitive bidding supplies is that bolded.
And then B, an invitation for bids shall include the following?
No.
No, no one that.
Did he just give you a new one?
No.
Oh, that may be why. Maybe why?
And he's actually at page numbers one of.
Oh, yeah.
He'll change.
It's a long one.
Okay, so we figured out the first page, right behind the the back of the first page. And this the this kind of tells the getting competitive built bidding, competitive bids for supplies, these are the protocols follow.
You read through all this, Melissa?
I did read this.
Okay, and it's all. I mean.
Um the only part that I was questioning was on the public works and I don't know if.
Okay, we'll get to that here.
But those amounts um. If you're correct.
Cause it's going back to the one, if if you always added all this green, I mean, I'm okay to keep it if we wanna keep it, but I'm also okay to strengthen it if we don't. If it doesn't have value or is this, I don't I don't even know how to interpret it really.
Well, the bottom of the second page, there's an option there. So Melissa, what the purchasing agent or the committee appointed by the board, kind of option.
So this is where we have this board appoint like board approved people to open the bids.
Okay.
So I might need to look at the board docs terminology of when you guys um approve us to open the bids of what.
What you're called.
The exact wording is, because I don't.
I think it's just people approved open bids.
Is that what?
Yeah. You have to have a bid committee and you know.
Bid approved.
So committee appointed by the board?
Yes.
Okay, so the committee appointed by the board is our option. Page three.
The second page is not quite accurate.
Okay.
This is an invitation for a bitch, shall include the following. It is. I think you could have eliminated a lot of those paragraphs by saying specifications for the purchase, because once you get to a hundred and fifty thousand, you have to have specifications. It's not the evaluated criteria relate to quotes, not not to bids. Bids need to have specs.
So you can like. What they need to tell us.
Pardon?
Is it R F P?
No, the R F Ps and bidding are mutually exclusive concepts. The board before it authorizes an R F P has to make a finding. The typical bidding process is not likely to. Create a not 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 likely be for meet needs of the board. Usually R F Ps involve some element of uh. Responder. Input into the structure of the, you know, examples, uh putting an elevator in the county. The R F P indicated that we wanted to hear how they had been in control of sound noise, what have you doing, working out, restricting court time, whatever, things like that. Whereas, you know, if we're building a bit, we're for. Building something, you're gonna have specifications.
Yeah, I just felt like number three was more tough, like would deal with more like an R F P than there asking.
That I agree, I agree, I agree. The R quote, you know, same same language kind of appears. Quotes are just different lower financial threshold.
So is there anything then we wanna change in that on page two in under number three?
I I think those are general enough to where the terms, you know, we're gonna do specifications. That's why typically in some of these, if there's any public work aspect, you know, it will have to be an A E involved.
Okay, so we're gonna keep those. At page three, those options for determining whether a bidder is responsible, what kind of evidence do do we gather? I mean, I hope it's. Many or all of these, but let me, we're, do we look at experience? I don't. We do look into previous work they've done.
Depending on the context. Again, the most significant are the public works and that is form. That is determined by the Form ninety-six that the state requires we use. That has everything in it. Non collusion affidavit, statement of financial ability.
So we need to put a check for all of these in? Is that what I'm hearing? So.
I.
I mean.
You know.
I feel like before when we have had a new bidder that we haven't known, we've asked for previous projects or references.
We just did that, you know, in test rough, because that was in how to stay bitter.
Yes.
And we've. We had legal issues upfront that were challenged and then we resolved those, but Kevin did not feel comfortable enough to just.
Just, yeah.
So he did a very thorough vetting of the contract, and I think we had a few issues at the front where there were lack of familiarity in Indiana law kind of. Bumped heads with our project, but I think it's worked out.
So Melissa, are you comfortable with the check for each of those? Is that or is that, what do you think about the facilities? D, do we check their facilities?
It says may request evidence, so we don't have to do any.
I think, well, for example, the the bus thing that we had, we found out that they were operating their business out of a garage. Instead of.
What bus?
The the thing that didn't work out very well.
Oh, the software. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe if we've.
Okay.
Done better due diligence there. We checked their facilities and saw they were working out of their mom's garage.
It's Steve.
I that's what I was saying.
I guess, but we don't wanna be the startup. We wanna be ten years down the line.
I do like that may request though, because it just says you can.
Right.
It's not like you have to, so I would say check all of it.
It's whatever your level of diligence you feel needed the project for.
Okay, if we move down further on page three, the optional provision there. Board allows.
You really don't have any choice. If it's an if it if it's an obviously erroneous bid, the bidder has a right to throw it.
That's what we've done in the past too, I remember.
Usually this involves a failed bid, the full scope of the work or something like that.
So we'll check all those.
A and B.
And then how many business days, do you think?
Does there have to be a number of days? Do we need a number of days?
No, we don't.
I I I would leave that blank. I mean, because it's gonna be a function of the complexity of the bids, number of bids, the amount of. The amount of the post bid interviewing process that you hear Kevin talking about what they have to do.
Take it out after.
So I mean, I don't think we can dictate how long that's gonna take.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to page four. It looks like there's a dollar amount needed under section purchases of services under A for purchases of services anticipated to exceed blank in a single school year.
You don't have to have that.
Yeah, this is, I'm. Yeah, this is, I'm.
You could eliminate that entirely.
The whole paragraph? That whole section of purchases of services. Okay, what about the next part on page five, the public work projects less than three hundred thousand, or. Projects at least three hundred thousand, so this is a, this is a different set of criteria, I'm assuming, than the hundred fifty thousand.
I'll have to look at the statute in that, like, it's been a while.
When I searched, I was getting the three hundred thousand amount, but the things that I were pulling up were from a few years ago, so.
One time it was a hundred fifty to two hundred.
And then I saw something in another place that said the same amounts as our bid amounts, but that didn't seem right, because previously it was the three hundred thousands.
They, they jumped it up, cause I think the. Public entities have wanted more, higher thresholds, so they don't have to, you know, there's expensive policy or specifications. This is definitely the quoting process, less than three hundred thousand in public works, but I, frankly, I don't see that, because there's so many other statutory provisions that. Make that impractical, you gotta have, uh. Retention of for two hundred thousand. Projects. This is a mess, frankly, because.
It feels like it is.
Because they did two things, legislator did, legislation did a few years ago, and. Kind of half eight manners, if you will, uh, they modified the federal, per, the, the, the state, rather. Purchasing and bidding statutes in title five, and some of those spill over into where we are. In title thirty-six of the code, thirty-six one twelve for. You know, for purchases, or for public works projects, and it's a mix and match, and it's a hodge, hodge, hodge. Uh, it all started when they repealed the common construction wage, now, I haven't been following it, I don't know if that made any, I didn't get any traction this year, did it? I know they introduced it, but, yeah, so, yeah, this, this is problematic, uh. And. If you'd like, I'll take a deeper dive into it, because I'm not.
Yeah.
Reacting in pages. If you're the focus, uh, things added at this point.
Okay, so maybe you and Melissa take a deeper dive into it and see whether, I feel like I'm making decisions on things I'm not really. Knowledgeable of here, or how things work. So I do see that there's a section on page seven of purchasing using online reverse auctions. And that, is this just combining our policy?
That's what I was.
That's, yeah, cause I was, I, I wanted to know what that was, cause I thought, when they eliminated online reverse auctions, I saw one policy.
Yeah, so they, but they just, they.
Okay, so we're striking a sixty-three twenty point oh one. Yeah, and then we're going to add it to sixty-three twenty.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense. Jeff, I don't know if we have any other things to discuss about this, other than Ron and.
Well, there's some choices on page eight.
Well, those are the things that feel like maybe Ron and Melissa need to kind of guide us, like.
For procurement.
I mean, I don't know what we currently do, or what the past policy has been, or what we, you know. So I would like, uh, my opinion would be for Melissa and Ron to give us recommendations for what to choose for all of these, based on what they.
Do you wanna bring this back then to the next policy working?
I think that'd be good. That's okay.
Yeah, we need a little time, so.
We'll clean it up and get it back to you.
Okay, that'd be good, okay.
Mrs. Brutton, uh, if you'll mind me asking, as we move forward of what we have found, even with two times the format of the grants and things. Would it, so who was, should we just stick with the electronic version?
Yeah, I think it's paper two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And if anyone requests, they're hard copies.
I think that'd be great. Yeah.
Just to clarify. So, so can we go through real quick the review, and this might help Cindy, too?
In, in this one right here?
Yeah, so the, the agenda?
Yes.
So, um, A, we're gonna bring that to the board, to the board for, uh, for first. First approval, first vote, first reading, first reading. Care of students with diabetes.
I don't think we had any changes.
We had no changes with that.
Right.
Student recognition, I'm gonna make a couple of edits there, and we're gonna bring that for first reading.
Okay.
D, uh, policy fifty-eight seventy, I'm gonna just add that word, and it doesn't have to come.
Yep.
Um, E, cash management grants, it's good, we don't have to do anything with.
Yep.
Um, F, uh, that's gonna come for first reading.
Yes.
G, that first reading.
Yes.
H, first reading. And then the purchasing, we will, um, we'll bring that back to the policy group.
Yes, yes.
And then the last one, to resend it, we do have to bring that to resend it.
Right.
Okay, so that would go to the.
So everything, but everything that I go to the board.
Okay, well. B, D, and E don't go to the board, cause we don't make changes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, agreed.
Perfect.
And then, so then, let's figure out our next policy working meeting, and then use, I think it's working well. With this process of ten seems about right for an hour and a half. And, and then if we can get them just a week ahead, that would be great.
It shouldn't be before that, I'll, I'll wait till a week ahead, I'm gonna do a speed through.
So let's.
A week before spring break?
Okay, and what week is that?
Week is the seventeenth, is that correct? Or is that week of spring break? Okay.
Oh, okay.
So that's the point, I think, there's a strategic planning, the fifteenth. Do you wanna go Thursday again?
I am not available Thursday, that's the only day.
When?
I'm not available, sorry, I teach till noon, but the twentieth is my anniversary, I don't wanna. Sorry, I'm just being honest.
It's Friday.
I'm available Friday, I'm available Tuesday, I'm available Monday.
Either Friday or Tuesday, it's nice. Tuesday is actually better, Friday, we have a coffee bar at one of the schools. Tuesday at ten, the eighteenth?
John?
Yeah.
Tuesday, eighteenth at ten. Thank you, everyone, for being here, thanks Stacy for pulling these together, and you, I know last time you said we're working through these, and these.
Right, so.
Where we have, plus where we had questions.
Correct, so we are, um, I think we've covered all of them from the March update.
Okay.
And then we will go into the, um, the next, um, set of updates, by the time we get through all the updates, of course, this legislative.
We'll have all new updates.
We'll be all new.
Okay.
But we did find that one of them that you wanted to review and one of the updates are one in the same, so we can combine.
Okay, and we'll kind of still work on that ten, ten to twelve.
And the meal of ones that you guys wanna review, we're down to, um, a different section, it just, it's a, we're getting.
Okay, good.
You'll see that invitation for the next meeting.
Yes. Perfect, thank you very much.